Gentlemen, put together this itinerary agenda if you would. We thought it would be important to begin discussions about the revaluation and start that conversation. And so we've asked Richard Lottner to come to us this morning and give us a little update about that, educate us a little bit further about the process and that kind of thing. So, Richard, we turn it over to you.
First off, I'd like to, you know, we know 2015 is the reappraisal. And everybody thinks, well, you've still got a lot of time. But that's not the case. Actually, the reappraisal is a very long thing. On average, it takes two-plus years to do it. So, this year to 2015 is the heart of the activity. And I'm going to go through an outline with you so you better familiarize. And I think Ronnie has been through one, and Jack in Chester has been around. So, it's really, you want to put it in the back of your mind, but when it hits, it's going to be the only thing on your mind. So, you need to be aware of it. Two years ago, you know, we postponed it, and there was a lot of question about, should we do that? Why we did that? Was this good? Well, I can just tell you, yes, it was good for many different reasons. But Mr. Hagan just asked me about the comps. If you don't have enough good data, I don't care what you put in, if it's bad, it's going to come out bad. Bad does not make good. You need good statistical information to set value or do anything. So, the sales from last year, being 2011 through 2012, were up 25% over what they were in 2011 of verified sales. I know there's a lot of sales out there, we all know them. I had an individual talk about, he bought something on a short sale this week, and he paid eight cents on a dollar for it. Well, you know, nobody's going to count that, nobody's ever going to count that. I mean, the bank won't count it, nobody's going to count those kinds of sales in statistical analysis to say where the value is. The courts of North Carolina ruled that it has got to be market value, and the reason, how you get the market value is it's got to be on sale exposed to the market, and both willing buyers and sellers are not pressed to make the decision. Well, if I'm going to have financial problem and I'm going to go short sell my property, that don't meet the criteria. If the bank takes it back, and Mr. Bill visits, sometimes they sell because curing the property is a bigger cost than getting rid of it, they sell it cheaper. So, those things don't count. So, what I'm talking about is the verified sales that are, meet the definition, are up 25%, which is a good amount in one year. So, what are headed in our direction.
So, with that said, you think that it was a good idea because now you've got more comps to use?
Correct. And it also bought everyone time. We still don't know exactly where the market is. You look at historically throughout the area. Two of the biggest states where people come from to Macon County is Georgia and also Florida. Well, Florida is like number one in foreclosures and loss of equity in property, and Georgia is in the top 10. So, those are two of the areas where people can't sell and relocate here or buy something here if they're having such a hard time there. They're improving, so that helps us. Even last week, I was in, well, this week, I was in Raleigh, and Charlotte's sales are up value-wise like 15% over last year. So, things are headed back the other way. In the time we made the decision to slow down and look, there was some things that have improved. One is the market is improving, that's when you said the value, as we said, sales are up so much. More varied sales, we're getting more types of properties selling. I think you look at some of the commercial stuff, we just had Walmart open, and there's interest in the old Walmart shopping center. There's some things from the commercial sector that's going on. Foreclosures are stabilizing. I know we have a lot, but I think you talk to the bank personnel around here, they're catching their breath a little bit better than they did 18 months ago. Enough data is coming in. So, all this is what we need to establish progress. One thing that we'll talk about is where are we going to go once we set the value? I know a lot of people talking about that and saying, well, everything, value needs to go down. Some places are, some aren't. I talked to a general appraiser this week. As we talked about the registry, you have so many individuals, somewhere around 36,000 people in this county, that live in Macon County. They have to have structures to live in. So, those types of property that average folks in it are going to live in, your housing market is more stable than properties that are speculative, or second home, or high-end, or something like that. If you look at the real estate market, the thing that have dropped the most is vacant land, speculative lots, some of the high-end stuff. And you look at things that are most stable, it's that market where people are living. So, when you put all that stuff together, you got to look at our tax value. Right now, it's, Lori has said it's somewhere around $9.3 billion. Where is it going to be in 2015? I can't exactly tell you, but I can tell you it's not going to be $9.3 billion or higher. It's going to be down here. And the difference of that is your budget needs compared to what your revenue coming in, you know, all these other things come into play, your sales taxes and everything else. Property taxes, your largest single item of revenue to operate the county, over 50%. So, if we have a 25% drop in value, your tax rate cannot stay where it is now. You've got to have a revenue-neutral tax rate, you have to advertise that, and it's going to be somewhere north of the value we have.
Let me say this, Rick, because almost everybody knows by state statute, when a revaluation is done, of course, we're looking at very different times. Every time until now, when you do a revale, values typically, at least here, have gone up. And that way, your tax rate gets to make the same, to $25 million, which is pretty close to our, that's our annual income, then your rate would come down. As Richard said, it is actually a state statute, when Jack presents us the budget in that revalued year, in that budget message, he has to give us a revenue-neutral tax rate. So, I think everybody needs to understand that going in, that he's going to have to present us with that by statute. And I think this board certainly would never look at revaluation as a way to increase revenue. I don't think we have any interest in doing that.
Look, that goes back to the reason you have a revenue-neutral requirement now, is back when property values were going up by leaps and bounds, 5, 10, 15% a year, a lot of places were using tax revaluation as a way to generate more money without, and lower the tax rate. And so, it was a little bit...
No, they could lower their tax rate, say from X, and they could lower it 2 cents, and still get a, an increase in revenue, which was basically getting an increase, which was basically a tax increase on the back of rebalance.
I don't think anybody envisioned at that time, they said, well, this is a way to keep them from using that to generate more money, that's the reason why I justify it. Nobody, even me, envisioned the time when your tax base would shrink instead of grow. Because in 30-plus years that I've been doing this, I've never seen a tax base go down, it's always gone up. It might be a small amount, one, two, three percent, but it usually goes up each year. So, you publish that revenue-neutral tax rate to generate this much money based on what you have this year. Well, what's going to happen, just like you're saying, Kevin, if you do a revaluation, as Richard says, if your total tax base goes down 20%, and you still have to generate the same amount of money, you might take the same level of service, your revenue-neutral tax rate is going to be higher than the current tax rate.
And we need to say that early and often, that wherever that tax rate is set, will not be a net tax increase overall.
I think the misconception that some people may have property value, they are, that doesn't necessarily mean, I'm going to pay less taxes. That just means that your value is going to go down for the fact of two issues, as Richard said about this. You've got to consider the value and the rate. And so, if your value goes down, your rate has to go up in order for the county to generate the same amount of money it takes to operate the school, the sheriff, and so forth. So, that is, that's just half of it. When people get their noses on their new value, they used to be all raised because the value went up, they thought their taxes were going to go up, when in fact, many times, the tax rate would come down and they'd be paying about the same amount of taxes.
As a matter of fact, I mean, when I came on the board in 2006, were we at 38, Richard?
38.
38 cents per...
38 cents, 38 and something today, we're 27.9.
27.9.
So, that's how much it dropped because of that, that they was doing that.
Well, you know, the actual high tax rate that I found in Macon County has been like a dollar 15. And that was in early 70s before we went to 100%.
That was on a 40% value though.
That's before we went to 100% value. The reason they did that, they want the taxpayers to be familiar with what your properties were. But if I, like I said, if I say your property is worth $3,200, well, man, they're crazy. Well, your tax rate is so high that you pay a whole lot more, so that's not good, and people can't figure out what their true value is like that. But we pay it's worth a hundred thousand dollars, you can probably think it's somewhere in that hundred thousand dollar range. That's why North Carolina did that. While we're on that, that goes back to 1974, and the first time it affected Macon County was '75, and at that time, people just blown out water. Right now, Mecklenburg County's had some major issues in their assessment from 2011. And if you keep up, the strongest, most powerful politicians are from the Mecklenburg area. So, there's a study committee, and we're been working on this, and Mr. Bill knows about it. But they're looking at certain things, and I'll just read some of the things they're looking at. Remedations being studied include new appeal standards, making that standardized throughout the state, standardized appeal date, forms, procedures, reassessment cycle. We went from, right now, law says eight years max. We got to do it in 2015 regardless. But the next time we look at it, I, there probably ain't going to be no 2023, it's going to be much shorter. They'll probably start phasing it down, six years and four, maybe a ratio. So, we might as well prepare to go forward from 2015. Budgets, the state actually has the control of DOR, setting up standards and looking and saying, you have to put X dollars back. Right now, it's a gray area. When we used to do it on contract, we have to tell the budget office every year, the budget, you know, $70,000 over eight years, $565, whatever. And we turn that to 40 in every July. But now, they're going to look at just staffing requirements and everything else, saying, you don't have enough qualified personnel with enough expertise to carry this out, you need to train these people up. Because that's what happened in Mecklenburg, the largest county in the state. They cut back over the years, and they were the leader in the South. Well, they didn't have enough qualified people, didn't have enough review officers, and it's just going to cause a lot of things to happen. So, we're, we got the, right now, we're fine, but we don't want to know what they're going to say after this long session, not a short session, but we got to hear to it. But anyway, we're in good shape for that. And we got a short period of time, so we're going to go through this big sheet. This is actually a timeframe from right now, 1/7/13, and it goes up to 6/15/15, the last item on that. Everything on the right is the timeframe by quarter, referring back to everything on the left. And right now, you see, we are field working, data collection, pictures, we're doing that, looking at sales that goes up through 14. You look at construction costs, we have to look at GIS. All these things got substandards under it that is very complicated, so it's not good for us to come in here. If you want to talk one-on-one, that's fine, but all these got things that we have to accomplish under. But these are the major things we have to do. One thing, looking at 2015, that's not when we have to have the work done. We have to have the work done in September to November of 2014. So, we're looking at 18 months at best. And that's testing it, getting your schedule of values adopted, putting them at the state level, giving people the right to fill those schedule of values. I mean, that's outlined in law in Chester, and that will keep us on date on that. But see, that comes up in about midway down, is that adoption of schedule. There are certain timelines, we have to do certain things. So, if we present the schedule to the commissioners on 6/10, we can't get it last day, 8/22. So, I mean, it's a, that's the quickest you could get them done. That's if we go in on 6/10, they, board says, adopt it, we advertise, that's the quickest. Last time, I think it went up into September, October, and then, you know, from there, you got to finalize everything, get it out. If that's the case, then you won't get the days out of November, December, it'd be February, March. And from the feeling, you know, that's about the time you're talking about these budgets if you look at your budget stuff. So, if you've got hearings going on, and you don't know where your tax base exactly going to end up, if you get down into May and June, and you still got a lot of hearings, it's hard to set a tax drain. So, we've got to stay with this schedule. This budget year, starting in July, and the following budget year, is we're going to have to put more money in the reevaluation process for staffing, computer stuff, and all this, it's a big lot of stuff that goes, because your last two years is when you spend the majority of your money. Over the years, Macon County has done their own reassessment. We started trying to do our own back in 1987. So, in the 90s, we were one of the first, Haywood and Jackson, Henderson, and some of those got involved with it. And we've been real successful with it. However, you know, it's getting harder and harder, the state requiring more and more things, and we've kept our staff, it actually shrunk. But we don't hire nobody, we just have one contractor that works with us in Jackson, back and forth. I can see in the future where the staffing level is going, you're going to have to hire more qualified people. And give you an idea, when I started, some of my appraisers, the Institute of Government charged like $300 for a class you needed. Right now, that same class is right around $700, not counting, you know, being on board and being away from office or anything. It's expensive to train up people. Anyway, that's where we are.
Before we move off that, I think it'd be good to know that, when I gave Richard a call one day, I was in a meeting, and they got something, that they were getting estimates on the rebound, bids on the rebound, and they wasn't accounting much larger than ours. And I just, I couldn't believe the number. How much, just take for instance, Richard, our neighbors, what it cost us a year. It's safe to say that we probably saved over the last, from even 2007, and even going into this year. I mean, you're talking the savings by, Richard's department doing these rebounds, and Richard can speak to it, I'd say conservatively over $8 million.
Yeah, it costs you right now, if you get somebody to come in, if we're on a four-year schedule, so that's what I think everyone's going to have to get back to. Based on our number now, it's going to be about $30 a parcel. So, we got $45,000, so that's $1.3 million it would cost minimum to get somebody to come in and do it. We do it because we do it with the same staff, we just rotate things around. We got, like I said, part-time contractor. We, over that same four-year period, we probably have $60,000 to $80,000 a year average. So, it costs us $300,000, or 1.4 million.
That's a big difference.
Big difference. And that number that I heard from some of these other smaller counties, they were a lot of...
Two million.
They, it was $48 a parcel. And of course, now they have some large farms in this county, but they have...
Because you didn't do an in-house appraisal, number one, you didn't have a computer system, you didn't have a mapping system like we have, you didn't have trained people to do it, we have all those things now. You used to require counties to set aside every year in the budget, from 1/8, what your estimated cost is going to be. That's not, that's a way to sort of set aside some money, but all you got to do is estimate that cost low, and not put enough money into it, and you get a $1.4 million building in the last minute after you paid for it. It's much better. There's a little part about contracting out, and I think probably Richard would agree to this. When you contract it out to a company from out of state or out of, wherever it might be, they come in, they do the revaluation, they give you the numbers, they go through it, and they leave. And you got to live with it for the next, until the next revaluation. With our own people doing it, we're here all the time, so anything comes up, we've got that issue, that background, how to deal with that, and know how that came about. And so, it's a much, it's a much more realistic and good approach to do a tax reevaluation by having your own staff to do it. So, instead of putting money in the bank and waiting for a six-year, and then hiring an outside appraisal firm from Ohio or someplace to come in here, the complaint we used to always get, Richard, was, they don't live here, they don't know what properties were. And you'd have the same thing if you did contractual审查, but I think our guys in Big Board, Richard's office, have a really good handle on it. We've got the tools to do it. And like Richard said, Macon County is one of the first counties of this size to start doing an in-house appraisal, and I think it's worked out well. If you can't do it on a more regular basis by contracting it out, and again, as Richard said, you want to shorten the time on it, if you didn't do it the way we're doing it now, you couldn't afford to do it every four years. It's going to be a bad time. But they do a really good job. I get a call once in a while about taxes and tax values, and I usually ask them if they've called Richard, because Richard's been around as long as I have. And I used to be a tax collector, by the way, so I understand the complaints, and the taxes such too in a former life. So, I understand a little bit more about that, maybe that's somebody over the county manager's doing, but it's a tough job. And if you want to really get the insight on human nature, work in the tax office and separate people from the money for taxes, you'll find out a lot more about it than you ever wanted to know. But it's a tough job, and we've got a good one. Outstanding tax collector of several counties, and a worse company every year, every other year, another job than they do. So, we're in good shape here as far as having the ability to do that. But the big problem that you all know, and the reason we didn't do it when we did it, we didn't do it when the schedule came up, is we didn't have enough sales.
One thing I really wanted to stress is the tax part of it. By law, what I'm charged with has nothing to do with what the budget is, or what you pay each January for your taxes. What I'm charged with is what your property would sell for on the market. And I have to say that. And I never forget, and this is when the county, we were a tiny county, one of my first board being ours, you know, we had two commissioners sit in there, and that was all board. And they just shut the door and just come in here and talk, and the idea was, well, you know, it ain't going to hurt to lower Joe's value. Well, you just can't hurt and lower value because Joe is a local or not a local or anything else. If you don't have the numbers, you don't do it. We've moved way past there. So, when we set the values, and we want it right, and Ronnie set on our board equalization, and some you feel for, some and everything else, but you don't have the number, you just say, sorry. Now, I just went to Raleigh Wednesday and Thursday for a case, and the man would not settle, would not, well, we didn't, we weren't going to settle, period, because his information was bad. And we had to dismit. Well, and it may change next spring when we get another appeal, but that's my 28th year down there, and I'm not coming home losing yet. But that will change, but we treat the people right, we listen to them, we try to get to the value it should be. But some people, you can't, and some people, you can't because equity. And that's the difference between going out to Macon Bank and have an appraiser come out to appraise your house from Macon Bank. They are looking about, the value of this loan is, Richard Lottner can pay that loan back, and can he borrow that amount of money? Well, we have to worry about is Richard's house equal to Jack's house, equal to Ronnie's house, where they're all similar in value because of the same property. So, it's a big difference being equitable. Also, if you do a poor job on reappraisal, Mecklenburg's finding out. They, I think they had 4,500 appeals to property tax commission. I mean, that's a lot. They had tens of thousands of appeals. Well, when I go to Raleigh, I can't go by myself, I have to take Chester or another attorney, and that's the base rate's about 250 an hour.
The other attorney.
Yeah. I mean, you can, there's a point. And that's cheap, because most of the tax attorneys charge 400, 450 an hour. So, you figure it out, if you've got a lot of deals, you've got to put a lot of budget back to defend those deals. So, it's better to do the job correctly, business people, to move forward, and we've tried to work on that. But needless to say, this is the time schedule, and through this time schedule, we'll be asking, Jack and Lori are going to bust process, we need to bring a vehicle, we need computer stuff, we need to do this stuff, and you can't say, well, we'll put it off until next year, because, see, we don't have a next year. 2014 is the year. So, anyway, that's where we are. That's about my update on reappraisal without going way into a lot of technical stuff, but if you have questions and that, every commissioner's been really good by calling or talking about it. That's all you say, come by and we'll talk a lot about it.
Richard, we see more and more counties preparing, if not already doing it, getting into the license tag business, before you come to buy your tags from the county. What's your feelings about that, or you just want to see how it goes, or...
Well, in my personal, if I was managing the money, I think the county's going to have to do that, Swain County's already having to dial that, we're talking about it. Let's put yourself in this tag deal. Mr. Bill, you get your notice to renew your tag on your truck this August. Well, that notice is going to say you got X values, all of that. You go down to the tag agency, and you got a question about it. The tag agency says, well, you need to go to the tax office, where you got 10 minutes job early on your job to get your tag, you got to pick up your kids or somewhere, and you got to go all the way across town, which we got a small town, where you're in Highland, say. You got to come all the way down here, go to the tax office, and then we say, well, that's not our problem, that's actually the DMV's problem. You go back down there. See, it's not customer service friendly, it's horrible. I think the county's going to need to get into it. You break even, hopefully, on the tag process, but the people be there, you won't run around, it'll be a one-stop venue. There's a perfect property, it might be an old First Citizens Bank, you know, you could set up, and it'd be right there at the courthouse with collection and everything, but I don't know how, you know, I'm getting 28 years, they ain't got a lot of years, but I would say, within the next five years, you'll see most counties getting into it, especially smaller counties, because usually, there's only one agency, and when that agency closes up, or there's a turmoil or something, the counties just take them over.
Ricky, how are they going to establish that a state, that the state does, which is their plan on doing July, how are they going to establish the value, they will be in the same system we do, it's going to be a system statewide, it's constant with every county, or is it going to be a county by county?
Yeah, it's going to be more standard, the county will have some leeway in it. A lot of things you come into is your high knowledge fee, and this goes back on your tag. So, you get your truck tag, and you're poor like me, and you got your truck that got 168,000 miles on it, and it's got a $17,000 value on it. Well, you should say, well, I got a lot of high knowledge. Well, when you go in that tag office, they're going to say, well, you got to go to courthouse. So, you got to come to courthouse, we're going to have to adjust for that high mallet, get it in the computer, and then you go back down and get your tag. So, that's what I'm saying, it's going to be very cumbersome to people. If, hey, Mr. Bill, you got a Chevy 3500, and it's got a special body on it, and, you know, the body, I don't know, maybe it's corrosion, it's eating it up, and I got a $10,000 body on it, you say, well, look, come here and look, it's a... And I got a ten thousand dollar body on it, you say, well, look, come here and look, it's ate up, it ain't worked in time. You know, that's a special issue, we got to correct it. We will have certain things, but they're gonna try to standardize that. That's what we get on reappraisal, that's what we need to do on tag.
And this changeover goes into effect, it's gonna be a, uh-
Tiny's part, really.
At least that.
When you make this suggestion, it needs to be done, it's not for you, Richard, I think what you're doing, doing a good job. Um, but you know the way inspections set up right now? You gotta go in and have your inspection before you can buy the tag. But when you go in to get that inspection, that has, the first thing they ask for is what's your mileage use on that vehicle? And you get it, that's just a piece of computer, I said, I straight in there to the tag office, I didn't, I don't know anywhere, shouldn't, don't let it sound for our luck.
Well, that's in logical law.
It goes into that, and we tried to get the state to come up with a high mileage chart and all that. They've been working on this switch over for six years now, so it's still gonna be a... And let's face it, it's big counties and then middle part states control things. And somewhere, you know, they, there was a compromise, and that's still gonna be, us having to look at the mileage and correcting it.
Richard, what about registration and so forth? I, I used to work in Marvin's years ago, and they used to have to take dad piles and so forth, give him the change over, and pick up to another person and so forth. And, uh, I never had a really big problem, I saw a lot of people getting cussed out in there over paperwork at any place I've ever been. So, it's a area where there's gonna be conflict, if it's not with the taxes, if we're gonna have to handle title work and so forth, that's gonna be another issue. When people come in, well, I'm telling them, you probably have two to go, and say, I wanna get this done, they said, words such and such. I don't have, well, I can't do, I can't help but go back and get it, and they get really outraged, so.
And see, the auto dealers came into this deal, they have to give you a chance, you go buy a new car, new truck, they're gonna give you like a thirty-day tag.
Right.
And then you get a separate registration to renew that tag now. I mean, so it, it's gonna be totally confusing, but-
So, are, are the, this title work also have to be done by whoever issues the license plate, whether it be the county or the back of the, people are going, have you know, or? Uh, I haven't heard anybody address that part of it, because it's not just getting your tag and paying the tax on it, you transfer, I'll sell a car to Ronnie, we can transfer the pile, we gotta send that to Raleigh, gotta go through someplace to get that, that title and transfer, and I'll pay that fee and get all that money as well.
And on top of that, probably this is something you probably don't know about, I don't, it's probably made me better, but during this, since '08 especially, what, if you let your insurance lapse, one day, highest, highest due. When you go back to get your tag, and it shows that lapse, it's a minimum hundred dollar penalty. Don't, you have, you, now you have current insurance, I went to Kevin and bought current insurance, but I let my other policy lapse between the time you got this one. They've instituted a minimum hundred dollar penalty, then it can go by days. Every time you date, so, uh, I, I'm not talking to the folk here, if that's a problem, but, uh, some of the folks I get to Richard talk to, it's, uh, probably getting cussed out.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an important, what you were just speaking of there, I had a, a truck that I sold, uh, first of the year. I turned, canceled my insurance around before the holidays, turned the tag in after the holidays, and they wouldn't give me a reimbursement.
Oh, yeah?
Because of the cancellation of insurance.
Collecting, uh, roads and highway taxes on sales that occur in counties of state, but for vehicles that are gonna be titled in this state.
That's right.
There's a lot of, a lot of things to consider before you, you get into that deal.
And then put it off, it was close to one back when, Richard, couple of years ago?
Oh, yeah, two, three.
That's Jack that's talking, yeah. I was some things, it's very technology, if you add that towards it, okay, in other words, one of us is selling to the other. You take that title in right here, it should be, it should hit it, and Ronnie, they'd be mailed back and shred that title, which is off right there.
Just having to talk about technology, and I think it's time that we knew, move on from our technology, Ms. Corbin.
Yes, sir.
Because, uh, Andy's here, and-
And you guys got that together.
We got a, we got some technology.
Keep us on task here, we, we've got, uh, a lunch break scheduled for twelve-thirty, we stay at least close to that. We've got three more items, information technology, emergency services in public schools, that gives about fifteen, seventeen minutes per, so I just want to keep us sort of mentally focused on, uh-
Richard, if, if I may-
Yeah.
Can I have this just around, and everybody look at this real quick, sign it for what you want, we'll get that spread, boy.
Before you, everybody just round the box.
Put your name, put your name, sign it what you want to go over to the end.
Okay.
Just put our-
Go ahead, Richard.
Uh, I'm gonna let Andy start in this, you know, because he thought more than just tax.
So, where's this going, and Andy's gonna give you background, but the tax system software we're using now, uh, with the same, uh, basically the same software that we're using, I think we're here, might be needed by. And so, uh, it's the same, same system, basically, except we have to hire somebody else. It, uh, it's not gonna last, it's not gonna last much longer. We're dead. There's a waste there, and from that, today, and he'll get in there, but we try to do that tax software at the revaluation at the same time. With the more that we can handle, so, when I do this phase, uh, prefer to have-
Macon County was one of the first counties to have software that integrated with land records, registered deeds, tax appraisal, tax collection, and finance. And it was all produced by one vendor, Keystone, the present company that owns the software, or Keystone is the present company that owns the software. The project came from software developed by Orange County and made available to a private vendor in nineteen eighty-two. Programs were so advanced for the time that over one-fourth of the units were operating them. As time passed, the development of personal computers and smaller and faster servers made the Unix operating system obsolete. Counties and software developers began to update and develop new software that operated on newer operating systems and platforms such as Windows. Along with this software, new and more mobile devices and applications became available and affordable. Now Keystone's tax application is the oldest and smallest supported software group available in North Carolina. Recently, Macon County has converted its, its operating system from Windows to, from Unix to Windows. This has done position of, of smooth software with newer flexible designs. The first stage is switching software to a modern design. Hewlett Packard has quit servicing our Unix servers, and the parts will no longer be available if a breakdown occurs. The second phase of the project will be updating the thirty-year-old software to a compliant software that meets the needs of GIS, land records, GMV, and tag interface, personal property appraisal, tax collection, appeals, enforcement collection, state recording, public access, and other much demanded services. Macon County actually started investigating the software solution around two thousand and eight in order to prepare for the changeover. At the time, North, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners was teaming up with Wake County to offer a software, NCPTS, to meet the needs, new mandates for all counties needed to meet. We looked at the solution along with others, most solutions were in the one, one point five million range, which did not include county staff and time of cost. As you can see, this is going to be more than we can afford to do in recessionary times. With all this said, the county, with all this said, where's the county in the project and what do we need to do? First, we need to complete the two thousand and fifteen reassessment. Second, we need to plan for a conversion, which will take up to two years. And third, the conversions start in two thousand and sixteen and be completed with a new reassessment before two thousand and nineteen. There are presently three possible solutions to this need. Obtain the onsite software package that's similar to how we do things now, except on a new platform, which will meet the new requirements. The cost of doing so would be approximately one million to one point five million with annual fees of seventy-five thousand plus. The county would be required to provide the server and the staff that hosts the software, which would add an additional seventy-five thousand a year to the bill. Second, to reestablish Keystone as the vendor and upgrade their software at an initial cost of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand. The county would also be required to yearly fees seventy-five thousand also to provide the server and staff as in solution number one. Third, to install the NCPTS software full server or in a cloud in which the hardware and staffing is provided by Faragut at a county cost of a hundred thousand per year. Roughly the same cost that Macon County pays now for yearly support.
Questions on what Andy just placed where our software is, is well, that's the useful one.
Is that, I mean, is something reading, is, I mean, is option three not the best one?
I'm sorry, what?
Is option three not the best one?
Yeah, but we had to show you three.
One point five million versus, versus that?
Yeah, and that option, to be fair, that option just came about within the last three, four months.
Yeah.
Uh, originally, to go to the state system, it was gonna cost us six to eight hundred thousand plus.
That's in no consideration of county, no.
That's their software, but I think that'd be my-
Many counties are using that software now.
Um, the number of counties, it's up around ten, but it's, they do sixty percent of the properties in North Carolina. They do Mecklenburg, Wake, supports them, so they wrote some software. Mecklenburg, Wake, um, Forsyth County, Guilford County, Randolph County, uh, McJow, I think, is getting ready to put it in. It was designed around North Carolina's machinery act. It was designed for North Carolina by Wake County, same as ours was designed by Orange County.
And the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, sort of endorsed and commissioned, get to be constructed, and there are some pros and cons to that sort of solution, um, currently. We're, we're hoping that some of these issues will be ironed out by the time we're ready to move forward with a software solution in that selection. Um, it does use a mainstream database, which is a consideration that's sort of driving us from the current solution we use. It uses Microsoft SQL, it offers both a hosted and a local solution, and the vendor has offered that if we use a hosted solution, they would be able to replicate a copy of the data back to us so that we're always holding a real copy of our data.
Andy, you need to start that up, Richard, you need to do that in two thousand and sixteen and be ready by two thousand and nine, or every day.
Yeah.
Three years, you know.
The, the concern about the, the cloud solutions in general are that you never know where your data actually resides. And NCPTS is, is currently in the process of seeking a North Carolina cloud solution provider, and or at least a United States cloud service provider. Because the nature of a cloud service is that your data gets stored at multiple locations, and there are some concerns that we'd like that data to be, uh, in the U.S. And the, the Association of County Commissioners has dictated that they would like that data to remain in the state of North Carolina and the services that are provided for that.
And Andy, did you say that, that data would be in hard copy form locally?
Well, we have, we have verified with NCPTS that they would be able to replicate back to a server where we could house a copy of the data.
And you gotta have that.
And we're, and we're still working towards getting them to agree, um, to be able to provide us with a client component so that we could access that data in the event that we were isolated from the hosted service through natural disaster. Another advantage of this software is, um, that, uh, they have performed a conversion in Henderson County from the same software product that we're using to their products, so they're familiar with the conversion process. And some of the things that are still outlying, um, is that for their hosted solution, they have not yet developed the integration with GIS. Currently, we have GIS that's integrated with our tax solution. And with their hosted solution, they have not developed that component, hopefully within the next few years, they'll have that developed. For their full-blown product, um, I think option number one, they do have that type of integration. But that would be required hosting on a server within our facility and maintaining the software product at our site.
Andy, let me just say this one thing, that when all this was going on and there was a discussion of this, that a lot of the counties that was, you know, with, with price of software, I mean, I think everybody realized, Macon County, uh, has, has always been one of the leaders in the state. We, we probably have one of the most advanced mapping systems in the state. And I said that, and I was really surprised, and what the problem was, that the answer, everybody wants the system. But, you know, to get that hundred thousand dollar number that these folks works hard on, uh, a lot of counties didn't get that deal. Because they're not advanced, they don't have new the mapping system.
They don't have the system to support it.
No, they don't have the system to support it. Well, we, over the years, have kept up based on this department, but I think, I'm sure there's some county that's ahead of us, Richard, but I'm not stable.
There are some counties that are larger than us that are probably behind us.
Oh, yeah.
We were the first in the state to have, um, that system Ronnie talked about, first in the state to have digital pictures, first to have this picture online. First, Andy and his staff or software has voted the best in the state for online solutions, a few years back. So, we have pride, but one thing I tell you, the recession has hurt the county in keeping up with the technology. So, right now, we're probably mid-level, um, because it takes money, as you can see in this presentation, it takes lots of money.
Yeah, we went on with the state system last year, we talked about going with that, it makes six, eight hundred thousand dollars, we just couldn't do that.
Andy, just for reference-
They've got to wait.
We'd have a, uh-
We'll operate.
We have a cloud company looking at our interior building now, it's a potentially sore one.
Yeah.
Might be a good time.
Cloud services are great for hosting certain types of applications, but when it comes to local government or secure information, there are some concerns that a lot of the major cloud services like Amazon and Google are not willing to negotiate. And when you have a concern that the data is only handled within a certain state, um, or that certain types of, um, encryption mechanisms are, are in place, you really have the mercy of those larger companies. But fortunately, we do have some smaller companies that are trying to address these niche needs, so I'm sure they'll find something. I did have a section here on, you know, other reasons why we were choosing to, to consider a different software product. Obviously, the client base for the current product is eroding in, in the state of North Carolina. And the current vendor, um, lacks the motivate, motivation to switch, uh, their product to a mainstream database, because they really, they built it based on that structure. And it's just too much engineering feat for them to re, rebuild it for a modern database platform. At the same time, it's, it's becoming more difficult to find, um, IT staff with the competencies that are specialized for that database because of less of a market share for it. So, the competitive, the number of competitive vendors is limited. Uh, we really need to get out of that, of that position because it gives us less, less flexibility to work, we're leveraging services for the best thing for the buck. And so, a lot of the customizations that are in our current product, we, we've had to rely on a third-party vendor to build those customizations. Not just because the primary vendor Keystone couldn't or wouldn't do it, uh, but because the quality work and the response times that we were able to get from them weren't sufficient. So, uh, we're, we're looking forward to the opportunity to get to a new software platform. There are some major considerations for hosted solutions. Um, and one of them that I've highlighted, highlighted here that I feel is it's extremely important that Macon County selects a solution where a local copy of our mission-critical data and a local client application is available for emergency access. Just as recently as last week, we had an emergency where we had to disconnect from the internet for a short period of time. There are, you know, foreign acts, and there are acts of somebody running through the fiber with a-
Backhoe.
Backhoe.
Cut the fiber with a backhoe.
Even though we've got redundant connectivity, we realize that some of these critical services would really be impacted if the tax office was down for two or three days because it was a fiber break, um, and that could happen. I think Town of Franklin experienced one where a squirrel chewed through their fiber a few days before Christmas. Nobody, no backhoe or anything involved, the squirrel just chewed through it. And I, I think it took them a day or two to get back up. So, that's, that's really what we're looking at in the long term, the tax software component. Uh, but there's been a lot going on in Macon County's technology in the short term, and, um, depending on how much time here I have, I'd like to, like to cover a few of the highlights of that.
I think that's good, and maybe in your highlights here too, you and I talked about cybersecurity, and so, that's a very critical issue for- And so that's a very critical issue for us. It's not, obviously, we have anything high, but we have a lot of information that can't be compromised. It goes critical to our.
Our accomplishments in twelve thirteen in IT and in technology in general are that we deployed, you know, the iPads for the commissioners, but in addition to that, replaced sixty-three workstations, roughly one-fifth of the workstations throughout the county, which is aligned with our five-year replacement cycle. We went through the, or are still in the process of completing components of our nine-one-one upgrade where their CAD servers were brought into our virtual environment. And for the first time, they have actually had a disaster recovery rollover for the CAD servers in nine-one-one. They also replaced all their workstations and we set up their new area upstairs. We got those workstations deployed. They're deploying a Mecklen CAD DCI server that extends DCI lookups and is going to be in compliance with criminal justice information systems requirements that are set to come in in twenty thirteen. We had some emergencies come up and we've had to virtualize some servers that failed unexpectedly. We had an adult dental server that failed unexpectedly and also performed a dental server software upgrade on the mobile dental unit. Completed the major upgrade in finance coming from version seven point four of their product to version nine point two, which required a lot of reconfiguration of the security model for their software. In buildings inspections, the blueprint software had server upgrades that were performed. Our hosted email solution was upgraded. We performed an upgrade on our Laserfish document management solution. And when I say we performed an upgrade, it could involve creating a new server for a new database platform that was necessary. These are real summarizations of those projects, but they were, they were all highly detailed. The waste work product used by Solid Waste had to be upgraded on its server. Deployed the NCFAST product to DSS. Sheriff's pack and jail pack products were upgraded for the sheriff's office. Ongoing work for the sheriff's office and their new site is deployment of the access control needs for the building and deployment of new IP telephony for their use. We've also reviewed their DDR needs for the surveillance systems and we're working with them on that. We deployed commercial-grade wireless solutions to the human services building and deployed smartphones and Wi-Fi devices for various department heads. Done ongoing work assisting Mecklen County schools in their equipment procurement that was mentioned earlier. And as a result, we were able to yield a savings of thirteen thousand dollars on their first few orders by changing their procurement method and leveraging the licensing that they selected. Installed a replacement fiber link between the annex and the courthouse. Our first location for that was eighty-seven hundred dollars. By having the cable factory built and utilizing maintenance for installation, we were able to reduce that cost to seven hundred and eighty dollars. We scaled out our server infrastructure. These are your, these are your two new buses, gentlemen. They're on the road. And they're serving the county's needs, specifically serving the needs of nine-one-one and the disaster recovery side. Continue to assist departments in implementing and supporting document management, Laserfish and the document management for the finance office, Tyler Content Management, and further automated document management processes for HR and finance. Deploying Microsoft Office for more than seventy-five workstations and deployed a conference bridge to support multi-party calls for conferences within the courthouse. And can also support outside callers. Continued deployment of IP telephony. I mentioned some of those that are being deployed in the new sheriff's office and engaging county departments with training opportunities. We deployed shared calendars for finance and collections and reviewed the same for the health department, transit. And underway, we have a migration of the universe database for Richard's tax application to a Windows server to try to eliminate the proprietary operating system that's in use. And that will provide disaster recovery services to the tax system that we've never had before. It's one of the stepping stones to migrating to a, to a new tax application. Currently underway, we're virtualizing our GIS servers. And our new servers are being built for the migration process. Just yesterday, we received five of the fifteen switches that we'll be deploying to upgrade the company's backbone infrastructure. And we are working on negotiating the length for the new fiber at the dental site.
We've done set aside the money to pay for our switches, right?
Yes.
We did that.
Yeah, we agree. A lot of the items on that list are things that are done, are things that are underway. Now I'd like to talk about an item that's never done. And it's one of our priority goals for thirteen fourteen as regards to cybersecurity. Over the past year, we've had several cyber attacks. Cyber attacks, a notable uptick in cybercrime, bank fraud, and foreign attacks have occurred. The county's hosted website was compromised and recovered twice. Websites are like the front lobby in their frequently attacked locations. This year, numerous workstations, county offices were experiencing malware attacks, either virus infections through email or through browser access. And we've been having to focus more diligent attention on working with authorities, increasing parameter security, monitoring our firewall, keeping our systems and software patches to the highest levels available, and keeping antivirus definitions updated. And mostly keeping our county staff aware of security risk. A lot of these risks are socially engineered risks. People get tricked into thinking that they received a package from UPS or that somebody's got a wire transfer out of their account. The curiosity overwhelms them and they go in and they get tricked and infected. In the upcoming year, we anticipate the need will emerge to redouble our security efforts. Securing connections we use with tolerant mobile VPN connections. Deploying enterprise solutions to image key workstations. Right now, we prepare backups on a lot of our main servers on a regular basis, but we also have key workstations. If one of those key workstations goes down, it can take three to four days to rebuild all the software applications, you know, we can do it. That's downtime that a lot of our department heads can't, can't tolerate. And to deploy enterprise product that will help us lock down the configuration and prevent these workstations from being compromised. We'd like to add additional tools that will help us prevent, detect, and remove malware and virus infections when they occur. And we're going to have to deploy a solution that meets the new requirements for criminal justice information systems as far as the level of communication security that they need and also the mobility.
Real quick, one example, what can happen and get happened in another place. Every county employee gets a letter, a note that says, if you don't know, Richard Lightman has been, has been sick. This is an online card. Please open this up and you can sign the card wishing Richard to get better. The minute you open that up, and you, I don't want to talk about you doing it. The minute you open that up, that virus gets in and it can go through the whole institution. And that's just one of the fishing, right, Andy?
That's just one, one way in.
One way in. And then you look at it.
Trojan, right?
Yeah.
They're hidden.
Crazy, yeah.
You don't know if you opened it up.
So one of our focuses in the upcoming year is to increase that level of security and deploy a number of different technologies to address that. But, but one of the other needs that we're going to have and are facing down the barrel of is the amount of storage capacity that we've got. Even though we purchased sand storage and we expanded that sand storage and then we worked on the backbone infrastructure for that network, the storage that we have is not sufficient for us to be able to store some of this monitoring information, the logging information that's necessary to audit what happened and where did something spread. And so we would like to be able to have enough storage to image and create backups of a lot of these key workstations. And that'll also help us expedite deployment of new workstations. Sixty-three workstations were deployed this year. Each one of them took somebody three to four days to get fully configured. And if we can utilize a deployment product that helps us get images similar to what Mecklen County Schools is doing, it will help us expedite that and put that staff time to better use. It also expedites the recovery should a system become damaged or infected. And then our enterprise document management is something that will continue to expand because retention schedules for some document types are indefinite. And so we expect that storage to grow. And then we have some other technologies that are utilized throughout the county that have data components. For example, our DDR systems, which are currently decentralized. Each independent DDR records for different areas, you know, for example, the surveillance of the. And also reducing the chances of loss of data because we frequently have an individual DDR component that fails. And we, we won't be able to go back to recover data from that when that happens. And we don't have data storage to adequately monitor and document network activities. And something that's really important for us is to be able to know and monitor who's coming in and out the door, just like a surveillance system, so that when an event occurs, we can track it back and provide the authorities with the proper information to be able to determine what's going on. And obviously, in this upcoming year, we're going to continue to research the products that are available to replace our current tax system and work with those vendors to try to negotiate the terms that are going to be amenable to Mecklen County to consider our needs in replacing our taxes.
Does that mean, Andy, in your budget this time, we're going to see some less stuff in the budget?
As far as the sand storage in February, I plan on discussing with my vendors what the solutions are to expand that system that we currently have or if an additional piece of hardware would be necessary. But where this year, we have switching and servers in our capital improvement, the year coming up, we expect to see something as far as the storage and security.
Andy, if I get any questions of Andy or Richard, if you want about the technologies.
Just say that Andy, our IP's got closer with our department, our department, state and federal. And if these issues, cybersecurity come up, comes up involving anything the county's connected to our IP department, of course, and local enforcement agencies, they have to be able to crack those people down. That's, that's the new world we live in and just to understand how important it is that we operate on computers. Now, our internet service last year was down because of a problem for about a day or two. It's kind of like electricity being off when you're used to operating that every day. There's very little you can do anymore, almost everything we deal with tied to a computer one way or the other. We cannot afford to have our system go down and inoperable for any length of time. So we've got to have backup. We've got to have safeguards on it. And that's, that's a priority that IP is given. And I think, I think it's well, well-placed.
Andy, appreciate the job you do. I think you and Richard both did a great two part in here. Second, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Our, our next segment, I'll let Commissioner Tate give a little introduction to this, but we felt like it'd be beneficial to give us a little update on emergency services, some EMS shift changes that they talked about and some possible equipment needs. If you should take, sort of take the lead on that, then I'm sure you'll turn over things.
Yeah, actually, probably Jack will probably do a better job of it, but, and the reasons behind it. We've been investigating some potential morale boosters and some suggestions and the kind of, from the department from there and how we might handle our emergency services not only help our employees morale, but to allow them to go to a shift where they might be more ready to respond. I can tell you from experience, it's tough to work three night shifts from eight PM to eight AM. Then you have one day off and they say, you know, you're working the exact opposite shift, eight AM to eight PM. It's tough to be on your toes, but we'll let David go into that and we'll talk about the reasons and how it might affect us as commissioners.
The things that's come up in the last, in the last year or so, or the last few months anyway, is our shifts. We had, we've had several requests to take a look at. Right now, the county's using what they call a DuPont schedule where you work these twelve-hour rotation shift. It goes back to an industry that you've seen several years ago. The county's been doing that. Most of the counties that we deal with have made modifications on that. Our biggest concern in looking at going to a shift where you work twenty-four hours on and then you're off seventy-two hours and then come back again, what's that going to do? How's that going to affect patient care? Because our number one priority in EMS is to make sure we don't compromise patient care. And we started doing some research on this. We found out that probably the twenty-four seventy-two, some people work twenty-four forty-eight, but if you do that, you're loading up overtime like crazy. Twenty-four seventy-two actually is, is more healthy to work. And the better response from our paramedics than the twelve-hour DuPont shift that we're working in, I think we've got a lot of information that will probably back that up. So that, that is something that we looked at and we looked at how much it's going to cost to do that. And it would cost more overtime to do it. But I think it was, it would probably, in addition to boost morale, I think it would make our paramedics more. I've talked to them and said, I'm on blood pressure medicine and all those other kinds of stuff if I can get my hours regulated, especially if you got, if you're off for a day or something, you got to tell me to work a night shift or a day shift or whatever it is. I'm not sure you're at your best. So a lot of the other folks we've called to, they're on the twenty-four seventy-two and we look to go in here. And like I say, how much is it going to cost? How are you going to manage the oversight? How's it going to affect our employees plus the patient care that they're giving the socialists? We've been studying this for the last three months probably and trying to come up with a better system than what we have now. There's always a better way of doing it. Right now, we've got like three different schedules. If you work in Islands or in Franklin, for the most part, you're working a twelve-hour DuPont schedule. We do have a twelve-hour, a half-day, I call it a half-day, twelve-hour shift in Franklin that works. It was working five days a week. Now we've got to work seven days a week. It really needs to be a twenty-four, seven days a week because we've got so much time and need for backup. If you work in Anahela, that's such a remote area and they're not covered up with calls. Most of the people, the schedule we work up there, if you work in Anahela station for any match, you work forty hours. So somebody goes up there and a crew goes up there and they're there for two full days. And then when they come back, another two-person crew goes up there and does that. So we've been doing that for quite some time. So what we'd like to do, we'd like to ask the board to give us consideration of letting us go ahead and modify our shift if you want to have injection to it, to do it twenty-four seventy-two. We've looked at it and we do, we are able to modify our budget within the funds that we have right now and cover additional costs on this for the rest of the year without asking for any more money for that. We can do that. We looked at it and opened the budget, what's your name?
Yeah, if you don't ask them for any more money, I think that's administrative.
That's a management decision.
Absolute that.
We can do that. I just want to make sure. If anybody asks you about that, that's, that's, that's the best way. And I think it's going to do a few free things. In addition to, in addition to being a morale booster and helping to deliver better service, I think it's going to help us recruit better paramedics.
That's what, I've seen that in larger cities. I know some people I know work down in the Gwinnett County, Georgia.
I would probably still be working.
How many have we lost?
They love that schedule.
Paramedics have we lost?
Yeah, radio and T worker.
We actually have only had one that left to go to another career. He went to be a fireman down in Door. We've had some other people that have left for personal reasons or.
How many?
We've lost, we've had two that moved out.
They're animal workers. You gain more of the space if you move anytime soon?
We do. We have, we have several that are reaching retirement age. We have four or five of our employees have been here since the original service. So they're, like myself, are starting to age out.
Who, who is that Dave?
Um, Wooten. Mr. Wooten's not one of the originals, but he's very close to it. David O'Dill, who works in Anahela's an original. Joe James, Joe Dawson, Jerry Watson. They're all reaching, right now, that's a retirement age. In the next, they're Jeff James and I.
Yeah. Just for reference, I took, I'm sure they could probably have done better, have a better idea of it. But I took just ten guys and I called them up, ten employees, and I was like, what do y'all think about this? Unanimous consent.
So Commissioner, as you're, I hear you say you recommend.
Yeah, absolutely.
The other thing that we'd like to ask, how that is going to cost money, a little bit of money, is that if we go to twenty-four seventy, we've got to. bit of money, is that if we go to 24/7, we've got kind of an odd situation here in Franklin. We've got a halftime, I'll say the halftime, this 12 hours a day, seven days a week. I know Ronnie remembers when in Nantahala and Highlands with the Franklin unit. And we can do that pretty good during the daytime with three units on there. But after the shift changes, we've only got two units here at Highland and Franklin. One's on the transport, one gets to a call, they have another call in Highlands and Nantahala. We can't wrap them up. So, what we'd like you to let us consider is taking that 12-hour crew and making it a 24-hour crew. In order to do that, we're going to have to have four more seats. We've got four people that are doing that now, is that correct? In order to cover 24 hours a day and 24/7 shift, we're going to have to have four more people to do that. And if we can do that, that's going to give us three full-time crews here so that any day of the week, we'd have three crews so that we'd almost always, almost always have a backup ready for Nantahala or Highlands when they need it. If you go to Highlands and our Highlands get called out on the transport or a call down to Skating Mountain or somewhere else and they got a transport, they're going to be gone for two, three hours. So, you've got to have somebody to cover them. Years gone by, we always depended on the rescue squad to do that. That's no longer an option. So, we have to figure out our own way to do our own backup. And we've talked about it, Jim talked about it, I've talked about it, David talked about it, and we've talked about it with other guys. If we are able to manage to find funds, if you'll give us authorization to look, I don't have them right here and now, I can tell you where the money comes from, if you'll give us authorization to work toward that goal, we would like to try to make that a full-time, third full-time truck in Franklin. That'll give us more than enough to cover here for our transports and our calls in the greater Franklin, Mayville County area, plus give us better backup for both Nantahala and Highlands. Jimmy may want to speak.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, I could probably name ten off the top of my head, and I know there's two to three times that many just calls in the Highlands area where we've had two calls come in within 15 minutes of each other. And we've only got one ambulance in the Highlands area.
Yeah, of course, you can put that, you can put that in your budget, work that in with everything else.
I'll agree to the budget, but I won't wait for them to try to come up with a way to pay for it. If we come up with a way to pay for it before the budget-
You're talking about for the rest of the year?
-we'd like to bring it back to you all sometime, let you get consideration on that.
Sixty-five thousand dollars for the rest of the year?
How much?
I'm estimating sixty-five thousand for the rest of the year.
For four, for four more people, it's going to be more than that, I'm sure.
You'd be quite brutal at it.
No, no, no. We've only got five months left.
Well, I mean, it's going to be a recurring issue.
I mean, for the benefit package, it's going to cost for the four people 168, 166,000 for the entire year.
So, divide that to twelve.
That's what I said, if you'd be seeing that.
If I put in all five times five or whatever, then we could have another balance of the year. I think in the long run, it's going to give a better service, better backup, better morale, and better response and better service for our people if we can do that.
And that's what I was saying, from now until June 30, you need to find about sixty-five thousand dollars.
If we start-
If you start, if you start February first.
The other thing, I'll throw this out, and we talked about it when we had a little get-together the other day with Jimmy and David, is we probably need to take a revisit of our ambulance fees. It's been what, 10 years since we've done anything to that, and we're getting Better Care Medicaid reimbursement help through the County Commissioners Association to pry that out. But we probably need to take another look. I'm not making any recommendations or anything like that at this time, but sometime between now and budget time, we're going to need to review that and see if we're up to the current rates on our ambulance services. And if not, we're probably going to ask you to take consideration adjusting that because you can't keep going for 10 years and doubling and tripling the calls and the cost of operating that. And it's not, it's not even a break-even proposition. After working with the county, having to do it with all the state men, there's no private practice out there but even going to ambulance business because you can't generate enough money for yourself to pay for it. Ms. Woodard tried that one time, if you recall, and she did-
Did lifelong?
Did figure along to figure out this is a losing proposition. You can't do it, and that's why the counties have been forced to take it over. So, if we want to take it over, we need to make sure that we can refine it, make it as good as it can be because the primary objective is to save lives, and we can't do that. If we can't do that, we can't have the equipment. Which brings you to the third issue. We're going to have no more equipment. The board allowed us this year to replace two ambulances, and those will be delivered when?
Mid-February.
Mid-February. In the past, we've struggled along to keep them going, maybe buy one, maybe do a remount, but they're all getting worn out. At one time, here recently, we didn't have any ambulances available and had to go out of the county and rent one that we could use to respond to calls so we'd have enough coverage. We don't want to get that vulnerable again. So, we're going to have to work on a five-year replacement plan, present that to you all when we do our budget on how we're going to, just like our police cars for the deputies, we're going to have to have a replacement plan for the ambulances that we're going to have to have.
I was going to say, let's don't go to the dollar and one watt, it's too expensive to do. Let's do a-
It is. We'll split it out, we'll figure out somebody to do that, so it's not a big blurb at one time. So, we could do that, but-
What I asked that, Mr. Manager, as far as the wire of the ambulances, and maybe you can speak to this, you know, we all thought when there was a helicopter in Franklin, you know, that hey, it's going to cut down our code, one code, two, transport to Memorial Mission. It's not.
It isn't.
So, this, like, take this week, and I don't know how many, of course, it's rained every day since last Monday. I don't know how many code one or two trips you've made to ice, but does the average one a day?
We average almost four a day on my grant, 24 hours a year.
I mean, that's, and that's ambulance out of the county for a minimum of three hours.
Oh, that's just get over, turn around, come back.
That's right. Just getting over, coming around, coming back. And you, and I have no idea if it was four a day, but I know every time it, you know, if it's cloudy or, we thought, and the helicopter does help, and it's helped a lot of folks.
It helps, but it helps not only in Mayville County, but it'd call out all the other counties around here, too, when they're busy.
But if it's, but a week like we just had, all it got was, it got washed off in the rain. I mean, so it's, I didn't realize that until I was talking to somebody in emergency in Memorial Mission.
And Mission Hospital has also got a ground truck here, and they're doing, of course, it is spread just like the helicopter to five, six western camps, but they take only one day of viral load as well. So, there's a tremendous amount of patients that go through here.
Just, I don't want to scare y'all with talking about the ambulances and equipment that's at the end there. I'm truly not expecting a significant increase in emergency services from last year because we already had two ambulances last year and projecting two per year. We do have some other equipment needs, but there will probably be an increase in the budget, but it's not going to be drastic that I'm projecting, even with the shift change adding the increase, et cetera.
No, it's not, it won't be. I think for the investment the county makes in that, it's going to pay, it's going to be a return on your investment.
I really think we can increase the rates.
I think we'll look at that and see. It's been a long time since it's been visited, so. The other thing that I'll mention as far as equipment goes is our defibrillators. You think upon, I think about the defibrillators, I think about somebody that puts those paddles on you and shocks your heart back, right? They do a lot more than that at this day and time. David can give you, Jimmy can give you details on that. We have them all over our vehicles. The newest one we got is over five years old. And we need to look at replacing those, and we need to come up with a plan sometime this spring. If we can't do it this year, we need to work on something to start going ahead in the budget, either on some kind of release or something so that we can replace them. Not only does it shock you, but it does what else?
Checks your pulse oximeter, keeps up your breathing and blood pressure. Pretty much that's all.
Remember, they had a demonstration out at, I guess, two years ago.
They did have some, the technology has actually, just like Andy was saying, it's something that's out today.
Does it do CPR, too?
In the proposal that we're looking at right now, we will actually get three of those automatic CPR machines in this package. Zoll has a program right now, but it is, I need to give that out as well. It is not going to be an option after February the 28th. They're going to take that off the board. With the first, they have a plan right now that for every four of these units that you buy, they will give you one free of those auto pulses that we tried to put on. It's been four or five years ago. We tried to raise money and it didn't happen. Those units are $10,000, $12,000 a piece. So, for every, for every four of these that we buy, they'll give us one of those free. To stock some of them up on the road, we have the QRV, which is Terry's vehicle, which is, it's a certified ambulance as well, just an instructor in it. And then we'll have one that will be a trade-out unit, so if one of them, for some reason, has a malfunction or something breaks in it, then we can put it back on the truck and that truck, because once you take this off the truck, then that's no longer an ambulance. Of course, in state North Carolina, that truck cannot roll unless it has the proper equipment on it. So, we always have one as a trade-out because we don't live in an area where you can have, you know, overnight shipments. Zoll has a process that you can ship it to them, they ship it one overnight, but the best we can do is two-day service, and we can't have an ambulance out of service for two days.
And the best argument for that is, you talk to several EMTs, and Jimmy can speak to it, and you've talked to them together. You imagine about to do CPR on somebody with a headburner in the back of an ambulance, and then serve for a heart attack. A good friend of Jack Horton and I just had one, it was 53 years ago. He was shot nine times. Had it not been for this, then he was brought in and his court temperature reduced, and he's alive, he's a lady. But, you know, when we first saw this thing, I could imagine coming off the head of his ear, coming from Highlands to Franklin in the back of an ambulance trying to do CPR.
That's not important unless it you have a heart attack.
That's exactly right. I mean, it's, I mean, just on the roads that we have, just think about, there's two people in the back of that ambulance trying to keep that person alive to give them life, so.
Would Jack need your, your vision?
These are items I want, we want to review on, to give you a heads up or things that we're taking consideration. Excuse me. That we're going to try and figure out some way to get this started because we're going to have to have eventually the defibrillators, the vehicles.
Are we going to tie up this conversation? You said that February 28th was the drop date date on the-
Drop date on that free equipment.
We'll be ready to by February 12th, this is your regular February meeting, give you some more information and hopefully get some direction or pull ahead. See to this.
If you can beat them down and find them any.
Well, there's really no way to beat them down. They're already on state contract. They've already been beat down.
So, that's the way, that's the lowest price?
That's the lowest price, and they're already on state bid, so.
Is Zoll, was they the low bidder?
We just currently have Zoll, so we didn't get prices from other vendors. We have, we have automatic defibrillators out in the county that will interchange the pads that you connect to a patient, if they come with a special fitting on the side. They're, the automatic defibrillator pads that we have out in our county buildings will attach to these monitors. So, if we go to a different brand-
They'll load you in place with these?
They'll load you in place with these. They do make adapters that you can change, but it's a little piece of plastic right here, and often it'll be lost. That'll be something you'll have to keep up with. So, if we can stay with the same brand, it will work system-wide much better.
You say it's about $2,000 a piece?
That's what those automatic defibrillators cost, or automatic, I'm sorry, automatic CPR machines cost. These defibrillators are $31,000 a piece. We need 12.
Do the math, give a guess at it.
The book that I have in hand comes old, and there are some additions of accessories in there. Some of the cabling, some of the attachments that you put on the patient that won't actually work with the defibrillators we have now. So, I had them priced us enough to get started with, and then that'll be a recurring cost, but we have that budget in our medical supply, but so. Their book right now is $408,000.
David, I know we could get by with less. It would be nice to have all 12, but how many good defibrillators do we have now?
Well, like Jack said, we-
If you just put one of these on the primary truck.
We have five. Our newest ones are five years old. The other five that we have are 10 to 12 years old, and they were refurbished, you can see, 10 years ago. So, they were, they already had time on, they weren't that new. I personally wouldn't recommend buying less than five.
My point is, is if we took three of these and put on some of our backup trucks, or even in your truck, for example, it's probably maybe once a year, you're still the older ones, and we could save $100,000 on them.
Yes, we-
You would say it would be nice to not have them all, because it would be nice to have them all.
You would save money upfront by buying less units.
And then some of these?
By not buying the 12, and those automatic CPR machines may not be something that you're interested in, but if we go less than the 12, then you're not going to get the free machines, which are $10,000 a piece. That's for, it actually comes out to $48,000 for some equipment that we're getting for free by buying the 12. If we don't buy the 12, then we can, and throw those out there, you know, then we won't, we just won't get those.
How much are they, if you buy the 17?
Their quote is-
They were $13,700. Twenty-first?
Right. Their discounted price in here is right at 11, $10,995. And that's what the machine is selling. But then there are, then there are accessories that come with that, which they're also given, which are batteries and chargers and casing, and so it comes out to $48,000 for the three of them.
Well, as somebody who originally could have ridden back on ambulance ride after Christmas, I can verify that we have some really good folks out there, and they do a super good job, but they've got to have the equipment, they've got to have the tools to help them do that. If you're going to ride one, it's better to ride one that's not an emergency or just look at it and have a work on you when you're in the back, but you go with service. Those are, Jimmy may have anything else that he may have, or David, but those are the shift schedule. We have a 24-hour truck in Franklin with the trucks, and we're going to have to look at a five-year replacement plan instead of just going on the whim from year to year. And the defibrillators, those are some priorities that we see in emergency services, who would really hope that the board would infer that that's not a priority and we should pursue those things.
And he'd come back to the plane and just take a little care.
You'll have that, our next thing, February. We'll have some of that in February, too.
Jack, I got a suggestion. It's, our lunch has been delivered. The next item is public schools. If we could put that, the item after that is capital improvement projects, which includes schools, we could sort of combine those two.
Both of them are good schools.
So, we'll just make those two items start, and I think lunch is ready. Commissioner Tate, would you, would you western two doors?
Yes.